This is the June 28 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We'll start right into the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved. Second.
Okay, a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Any announcements this evening?
I have one. The Shrewsbury Parks and Recreation invites everyone for a concert at Dean Park on Sunday, July 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Beatles For Sale is an award-winning New England-based Beatles tribute band that recreates the sound of the Beatles. This first-rate quartet brings the essence of John, Paul, George, and Ringo to you with passion and attention to detail. The concert is sponsored by Shrewsbury Parks and Recreation and Friends of the Shrewsbury Public Library. This concert is supported in part by a grant from the Shrewsbury Cultural Council, a local agency which is supported by the Massachusetts Cultural Council Estate Agency. There will be food available for purchase from Boy Scout Troop 114, hamburgers, hot dogs, canned drinks, and Kona Ice Truck will be selling snow cones. Bring a blanket or a lawn chair to enjoy the show, and wear your red, white, and blue.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, next we have the town manager's report. This last, you have anything this evening?
The only thing I have under the town manager's report is the COVID-19 update. I don't have a presentation, but just wanted to report to the board and the public that for the past seven-day period from June 17th to the previous Friday, there were 53 additional COVID-19 cases that had been reported to the state. We decided as a team with the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance that because cases are declining, that we would curtail the weekly reporting, but we would still be obtaining that data on a weekly basis from the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance and would alert the public if there was an increase in cases or spikes. We do remind the public that we maintain a COVID-19 dashboard that is updated every Friday that does show that case data. So at this time, we are going to curtail the weekly reporting, but again, we still maintain the data, and that can be obtained at any time someone feels it's necessary, and if there is some sort of spike in cases, that we would resume some sort of reporting on a determined period of time that merits that.
Okay, great. Any questions? No. Okay, item four is a new item on the agenda, but we don't have anything on department public comment this evening because I think we get the message out perhaps a little bit too late for people to contact the office, so perhaps for our next meeting, there'll be people who'll be interested in participating in that part of the meeting. So our next order of business is a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust to review the progress to date and present a draft scope of work on the housing action plan. So we have members of the Affordable Housing Trust, if you'd like to come up. I'm also a member, but I think I'll just see.
I'm also a member as well.
Yes, that's right.
I think you'll never make the answer.
I chair as Hector Cruz, so good evening to all of you. And Hector, why don't you introduce the people sitting with you at the table, and you can take us through the presentation.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having us, the Board of Selectmen and Assistant Town Manager. My name is Hector Cruz. I am the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, and to my right is our Vice Chair, Ms. Bryant, and to my left is Mr. Cahill, if you've ever heard of him.
Development. For today, I'd just like to give just a quick update as to what the committee has been doing, and I'd like to start with just a quick background. Just at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, the Shrewsbury Affordable Housing Trust bylaw was approved by the town meeting. The purpose of the committee is to provide the creation and preservation of affordable housing in the town of Shrewsbury. To achieve the goals, the affordable housing goals, the Affordable Housing Trust Committee anticipate using two sources of funds, the Fee and Lew Special Permit Application and the Community Preservation Committee, to achieve these goals. The Affordable Housing Trust held its first meeting in December of 2021. We've attended the Affordable Housing Trust training in February, and we have held monthly meetings since. The committee, with the assistance of Mr. Cahill and the Planning Department, assisted us in reviewing, in sourcing and reviewing the action plans from the neighboring towns to get an idea of what should be included in our Shrewsbury plan. In April, we requested for the Planning and Economic Development Department to identify some consultants for us to help us prepare in the action plan. Looking at what we reviewed previously, we quickly figured out that there's a limited pool of consultants out there that do this type of work. So, you know, there will be, you know, a handful of applicants, but I think that based on what we reviewed, we will be able to get a good product. At the past May meeting, the committee requested for the Planning Department to draft a scope of service for the action plan, with the deliverables are as follows: to create and define goals and priorities, participate in a public engagement session, to develop a strategy based on goals and priorities gathered through the public process, and finally, to develop a draft action plan. Based on some estimates that we were able to gather, we anticipate that the cost for this plan would be approximately $30,000. And we would use the funds available in the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust to pay for the services. The timeline for this is going to be aggressive. We hope to get the scope of service out in July. We will have a period, open period, for questions up to August 1st. Responses due by August 8th, and proposals into the Planning Department by the 25th. We plan to have interviews the week of September 12th with a projected start date of October 3rd of this year.
Right. Questions from the board? I'd just like to add that as we get into this, and I know Ms. Samia and Ms. Cassavian, I just saw, I don't remember if you were on the board.
I think so. Maybe at the tail end of vote.
Were you creating?
It was definitely Mr. Kane that was working on this with us.
Right.
So.
It looked complicated and involved when we were trying to put the trust together. And when we get in it and have the training, it's very complicated. And we were told by our trainer that anybody who wants to be on the Affordable Housing Trust should plan on spending a lot of time because you can't do it if you don't. And after talking about it for a few months, we realized there was no way we could get this thing started without the help of a consultant. There's just, there's just too many technical pieces to it. So Planning did a great job helping us put it together, and we're really excited. We think we're going to focus on what we think shoes we can do, not as opposed to what the law says we can do, because there's a lot of things, the law says we can do, probably just don't fit for Shrewsbury. So we're excited. So hopefully, we'll be back in the fall and tell you what our plan is, and hopefully, we'll be able to get going on it. But at least, we're ahead of some other municipalities because we actually have some money in the bank. What do we have now?
Close to a million.
Close to a million.
Yeah.
Which if we, if we build something on last night, so we're going to figure out how we're going to do it. That's part of the program. But anyways, it's exciting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just have a comment. So I've enjoyed watching the meeting since the beginning. It's just very interesting to see a new board come together like this, especially after all of the efforts that went into creating the Affordable Housing Trust Board. It was challenging, and it's just been, I mean, I watched that presentation where the, someone came in, was, were they from the state? And basically, I think it was maybe your first or second meeting, and talked about everything that you needed to be doing, and it was, it was overwhelming. So I think that your board has done a really nice job of sort of chunking things and taking things step by step and recognizing the need for a consultant. And I think your timeline is aggressive, but I think it's necessary to be, you know, moving forward and continuing to move forward. I know that you're down a member, and the public should know that there was an advertisement for that vacancy that went out recently for another member on the Affordable Housing Trust to bring you up to three, or four. Are you a designated member, or are you a member?
The board has, has a member, so.
Right.
I'm a member. The manager has a designated, which is Ms. Lass, and.
Them three at large.
Beth and Hector. So there, there were five of us.
Right. But I just want to commend you. I mean, you've been doing a great job with this, and really looking forward to hearing what the consultant has to say and getting started really doing some meaningful work around affordable housing in town.
Thank you. And I, I'm not sure we would have been as far along as we are if, if we didn't have Bernie and Rowan either.
No, for sure. There's definitely, I, I see the, the expertise from both of you and, and from you, Ms. Lass, in guiding the work of this, this committee.
Oh, yes.
Just in terms of the action plan, thanks for the draft. Just a couple other things that I asked to keep in mind is fitting together, as you had mentioned, the Community Preservation Committee and the resources, how they'd fit in with the desired outcomes for the trust. Maybe that be in the scope, as well as the strategic plan, the efforts that are currently being undertaken as well, to be able to synchronize everything. So as, a lot of this is evolving real-time, to be able to, to put it together, to make sure our funding mechanisms are in place, are, as part of the strategic planning process, going out to the residents, seeing what their priorities are as well, and then seeing how that could feed as well as the consultants developing the plan that you're putting together as well, just to make sure that we can get as much vibrancy as possible from the various committees and the hard work that everyone's putting together. Because as we know, the housing, we saw the statistics a few years ago with the housing production plan and the number of 25 to 34-year-olds leaving out of town, and that's the lifeblood of the community. We know that housing has gone up and continues to go up as well. So affordability is a real challenge for people. So this is an important area, but putting it all together, I think is going to be important and hard work, and look forward to all your efforts. So thanks for your time, and thanks for doing it.
So to my mind is, do I?
We would like to get this out in July, yes.
Two, two weeks?
July 11th was the date we had discussed.
So pretty soon.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Okay. Any, anything else?
I just echo the comments. I think you guys are doing incredible work, and good luck with you adhering to your timeline.
It's in writing, and now it's, I vocalized it, so now I own it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Strong.
Thanks. Thanks for coming in. Hector, have a nice vacation. We'll see you on the other side.
Yes.
Okay, our next order of business is a 710 public hearing with Anubhasi on behalf of Hughesbury Street Restaurant LLC, DBA Terra Bruselas 2050, 2050 Boston Turnpike Suite 7B7 for a common victor's license. Is there anybody here for? Nobody's here? Mr. Rossi, no?
No.
Oh.
That's strange.
They know they were. Okay.
Yeah.
You weren't here. So, okay, so, okay, well, all right, then, I'm going to have to jump along to something else because the next meeting is not till 7:20. Okay, so we'll jump down to new business, I guess. Number eight is to review and act on a one-day all-alcohol license request from Joe Yosef, St. Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive, for the following event: wedding on July 2nd, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and a wedding on July 9th, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay, next, we have a series of appointments for terms on commissions and boards that are expiring on June 30th. So the next item is to review and act on town manager reappointments of Diane Tenelli, 7 Eastern Point Drive, to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2025. Do you want to do these one at a time?
However you'd like to do it, Mr. Chairman. These are the managers' reappointments.
Right. But, all right, these are, I'll just read them. And if somebody wants to pull one, we'll pull it. Amathahog Gausch, 16 Rockwell Drive, to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2025. Crystal Lottar, 3 Ryan Road, to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2025. Keel Ian Aslanian, 285 Main Street, to the Historical Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2025. So could I, could I have a motion, or is there any discussion on those? Can I entertain a motion?
Move to reappoint. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. I think where these are our appointments, we should probably do one at a time. The next one are our board appointments, our reappointments. First one is Beshay Bryant, 39 Woodway Drive, to the Affordable Housing Boarded Trustees for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
It says a two-year term, Mr. Chairman.
What?
It says a two-year term.
We amended the agenda.
That, that was.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know which person or thing.
Two-year term is correct.
Is it a two-year term?
Two-year term is correct.
Okay.
I got this one this morning. Sure?
Yes, this is the reposted one.
All right, we'll do it for the two-year term, but I talked to Justin about this. I think it's a three. But, okay, we'll look up. We'll do it for the two, and we'll fix it next time if it's not right. Okay, so for a two-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024 then, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay. Did any of these other ones change then?
No.
No.
Jason Molina, 31, Wachusett Ave, to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay, next is John Gianant, 14 Lampada Drive, as a constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Item, the next item is Raju Nan, 14 Lampada Drive, as a constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Next is Robert Esposito, 237 Maple Ave, as a constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Next is Keith Baldinger, 100 Maple Ave, to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
Move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Item, item H, Nonye K Petrucci, 1 Torrey Drive, to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2025.
Move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Item I is Robert K Pine, 20 Montgomery Avenue, Worcester Mass, to the Insurance Advisory Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Before this motion, just for clarification, this is a position for a retiree who works in Shrewsbury. This is part of the Insurance Advisory Committee, so he doesn't have to live in Shrewsbury. He's, he was an employee in town. Some people get confused when they see that, but it is correct. So anyways, can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Item J is to reappoint Stephen Madouse, Stephen F. Madouse, 100 Front Street, Worcester, Mass, to Town Council for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay, why don't we stop there?
Did we?
And we'll move on to.
Did we do Jack Manzi?
Oh, did I? No.
I think we missed it. It was F.
F.
Did I jump it? Did I jump over it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, let's do that. So item F is John J. Manzi, 20 Hillside Drive, as a constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay, now we'll go to the 7:20 public hearing. Okay, we have a public hearing with Bishoy Abraham on behalf of St. Moses the Strong, Inc., DBA Shrewsbury House of Pizza, 424B, Hapford Turnpike, for a common victor's license. Is anybody here for this application? Good evening. Would you like to come up to the table? Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Sir, my name is Bishoy Abraham, and I'm owner of the business for Pizzeria for Shrewsbury House Pizza, location at 424 Hartford Turnpike, on Route 20. And we're here to get a license for a doctor's license.
A common victor's license.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, what are the hours of operation?
It's open every day except Sunday, from Monday to Friday, 10 to 9.
Okay. Okay, any questions?
What about Saturday? Sorry, Monday through Friday?
I'm sorry, Monday, I'm sorry, Monday to Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We close Sunday.
Okay. No question?
The application says 10 to 10.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Which one is it?
Yeah, we changed it because we.
He can, he can have more hours than he's open, but.
Okay.
So if he wants to keep it that way, he can. Do you want, do you want the license to say Monday through Saturday?
No, that's fine. I'm gonna, I need it from Monday to Saturday. We close Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if the board decides to approve the license, then I'll just make note of that, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
That means that if they chose to open on Sunday, they could do so, and they could choose to be open 10 to 10 any, for seven days a week if they choose.
Not if we do it Monday through Saturday. He, he just said you only want, you only want Monday through Saturday, right?
Monday to Saturday. We close Sunday.
So if we make a motion to that effect, then he can't, he'd have to come back.
So we're going to amend what we see here.
If we, in the motion, it would be fucked up.
Okay, so Monday through, because I'm the one who has to make this motion. Monday through Saturday.
Yeah.
What are your hours?
From 10 to 9.
Thank you.
You are?
Okay. No other questions? Okay. You know I can't hear. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay, there being no one, we have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay, the hearing's closed. So.
Mr. Chairman.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I, I move that the board grant a common victor's license to Bishoy Abraham on behalf of St. Moses the Strong, Inc., doing businesses Shrewsbury House of Pizza, 424B, Hartford Turnpike, with the operating hours of Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so voted. You're all set.
All right. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Okay, so now we're at number 11, right? Okay, this is to review and act to approve the warrant to the police officer and our dog officer pursuant to Mashden Rule 140, Section 153, for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Next item is to review and act on the renewal of the inter-municipal agreement of animal control and animal inspector services with the towns of Westboro and Grafton for a six-month period through December 31st, 2022. This is just a mutual agreement to cover for the three communities if one of our communities happens not to have our animal control officer available on weekends or vacations or whatever, so.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Item 13 is to review and act on Amendment 6 to the inter-municipal agreement for the construction and operation of the Westboro Treatment Plant. This is an amendment to allow the board to enter into amendments to the agreement without having to go to town meeting.
And this is, Mr. Chairman, this is for construction, right? Because they're upgrading the plant. Is that correct?
Well, I think that, that's, that's the title. I don't, I, I think if they were borrowing and stuff.
No, I didn't mean it was borrowing. I felt like that already happened.
No, I mean, if we were going to do borrowing on construction, we'd have to, we'd still have to go to town meeting, right? Because they'd have to authorize the plant.
Right.
This is for, really, it's more for small stuff, right?
It's for amendments to the inter-municipal agreement.
It's off.
All right, so moved.
Okay, so, did you say so moved? I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Item 14 is to review and act on a salary adjustment for the town manager. We, we did the manager's review. He got a very high rating on his review, and this is part of the annual, actually, follow-up annual review after the town meeting where funding is available for the next fiscal year. So anybody'd like to make a motion? Or any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion based on the agreed-upon 2% cost of living increase that all employees, union employees, receive. And then, thinking through Mr. Mizikar's review, where he did exceed expectations, I recommend a 1.5% merit-based increase in line with just the updated way that we are tying employees' performance to increase going forward. So that would be a total increase of 3.5% for the manager as a salary adjustment. for the manager as a salary adjustment.
Okay. Second.
I will second.
Any other comments?
I agree with, with the motion. I think that when we look at what the town put in for a scale for performance-based salary adjustments, it was a scale of up to an additional one point seven five percent over the COLA, and where the town manager actually fell between and exceeds expectations and exceptional outstanding, I agree that, I agree with the recommendation to, to provide a one point five additional over the COLA for a total of three point five.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I would agree. This is the first year we've actually used this system, right? Ms. Lass?
Yes, this is the first year that the non-union staff had used a merit-based system that is correct.
Okay, and this is in line with what the Personnel Board had devised as a policy. Okay. All right, so if there's no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, item fifteen is to, excuse me, review an act on the proposed revisions to Board of Selectmen Policy twenty-eight, Board of Selectmen Appointments, Municipal Boards Committees, Commissions, and Ad-Hoc Committees. We've talked about this several times. Last meeting, we had some discussion, and Mr. Samu is gonna make some changes based on that discussion, and I think we have another draft. Would you like to take us through some of those changes?
Sure. So it's Policy twenty-eight, titled Board of Selectmen Appointments to Municipal Boards Committees, Commissions, and Ad-Hoc Committees. Originally adopted on May twenty, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, we had some discussions earlier this year about policy and what it covers and what it relates to, particularly reapportments and what people need to do in connection with reapportments. Took a look at the policy, and we've streamlined it. There's a lot of red, but really, what it's doing is consolidating and avoiding or eliminating some duplications. But the gist of the policy, just for those watching, and just to refresh all of our recollections here, is that the policy sets forth the guidelines for boards' appointments of town residents to board-appointed positions, which are, you know, boards committees, commissions, and ad hoc committees, which it describes later about standing committees and ad hoc committees, and talks about the qualifications that we're looking for, and then it breaks it down in terms of what we're gonna do in advertising all positions, even those that are all with expiring terms, before, and also sets the timeline for that, as well as the timeline for members of the various board-appointed positions, when they're up for reapportment, when we'll expect, we'll give them notice in terms of when we'd like to know about whether or not they want to seek reapportment, and the expectation regarding their interest in reapportment as we go through this process. What's changed in this, besides a lot of consolidation and maybe wordsmithing, is just the added posting of all positions that will expire. It doesn't suggest that those who have done a good job will be going through the rigor of going through the whole process of being reapointed, but what I think it does is it increases awareness of the positions that are out there. We've talked a lot about increasing participation. The hope is, is that as we post the positions, that individuals who may be interested could express some interest in the positions, and if they're not appointed, we'd still have their names going forward as other appointments come along. So it's providing that additional opportunity for residents, so we're expanding awareness, advertising all positions. It's consistent with the town manager's practice, the hope of increasing awareness, potential participation, getting town residents opportunities to participate if they desire, not only if they don't get that opportunity, but for future opportunities. And that's the gist of it. It's just streamlining the process and moving some things around. So with the upfront part of the policy is about appointments, reapportments, and we talk about committees and standing committees, and how the board will only look to appoint someone to a board-appointed position if they're not on other committees or boards. And the hope is other appointing authorities in the town would follow our lead. We don't have authority to require that they do, but we're asking that by our lead that follows. So a lot of red on it. It's not that a lot of it, as much change as it is, just tried to clean it up. It's a complicated policy, hopefully less so with these changes, and that's what's before you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I appreciate the edits. I think it reads clearly, and will be helpful to people as they refer to it when they want to consider opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I think one of the benefits to it is if people do apply, and they understand that if they may not get, if, if they happen not to get appointed to a particular position they apply for, they may be considered for another position, and the manager has been very successful at using that. And one of the people who was just appointed to the Finance Committee actually applied last year, and he got appointed this year. So I'm assuming the moderator went back at his pile and went back to the person and asked him. So I think it helps. So we'll see. Nothing's forever, but we'll see how it goes. So thank you, everyone, for the discussion and the work on it. Okay, so if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of Policy twenty-eight.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item sixteen is to review an act on a development agreement with Gray Star Development East LLC for the construction of a fifty-five-plus residential apartment complex to be located at four oh nine South Street. This is commonly known as a forty-B, but it's a fifty-five and over forty-B. So Ms. Lass, do you wanna make any comments on this?
I can just briefly take the board through the high-level items. I know you've had a draft for at least two weeks, and I've seen previous drafts before that. So just to remind the board and the public, Gray Star Development came to the Board of Selectmen back in the October-November timeframe and requested that the Board of Selectmen enter into a LIP application, a local initiative program application, for Gray Star to submit to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. That is also known in lingo terms as a friendly forty-B. So the developer is proposing to construct a hundred ninety-six units at four oh nine South Street. Forty-nine of those are intended to be affordable, which is eighty percent of the area median income. The units are intended to be age-restricted to fifty-five and over. As part of that LIP agreement before, we agreed to co-sign that application. The Board of Selectmen was very clear that they intended to enter into a development agreement with Gray Star in order for us to have a little bit more control over the application and to guide the process in that component. So over the course of the past four months or so, Gray Star has received approval from DHCD, has received that LIP approval, which is called a project eligibility letter through DHCD, and the manager, myself, and other town staff have engaged with Gray Star in negotiating a development agreement that we have kept you apprised in related to what that entails. That development agreement lays out that the project will be a hundred and ninety-six units and no more than that. It lays out that the project will have a parking ratio of one point two five spaces per apartment unit. It lays out that the project will be age-restricted to fifty-five years and over, and over. That twenty-five percent of the units will be affordable to that eighty percent area median income, and that the units will be, the affordable units will be proportionally distributed throughout the project. It also outlines specific items related to upgrades that the developer will pay for related to the Walnut Street pump station and other associated sewer improvements. And it lays out that the town of Shrewsbury will offset those costs of those improvements related to the sewer connection fees. We do have a standard sewer connection fee related to any type of projects, and there's a specific related to multifamily projects as well. The agreement also lays out that the developer will pay their share of those sewer system improvements. So let's just say they're going to put in ten percent of the gallonage going to that pump station. They would pay ten percent of the cost of those upgrades, and we're currently working with the water and sewer department and our consultant related to those upgrades of the Walnut Street pump station and associated appurtenances there, too. The development agreement also discusses that there would be a fifty percent reduction in costs, in the fees related to water connection fees and sewer connection fees. This is not uncommon for other affordable housing projects that the town of Shrewsbury has engaged with developers on.
That's on the affordable?
The affordable units only, yes. So the forty-nine apartments. And the development agreement has that fee schedule associated with it. Just note that the fee schedule is subject to change if the number of units reduces in any fashion, or if the number of affordable units changes in any fashion. So this has been fully vetted, again, like I said, by town staff and town council, and we've had calls and discussions with Gray Star Development related to this. So the intention this evening is to ask the board to review, and if they do intend to enter into the agreement, act to sign that agreement. But I'm happy to answer any questions or guide the process however you see fit.
Okay. Questions?
I have a question per se. I think this came up when we were looking at some of the initial drafts, and I just want to sort of ask that we be mindful of the fact that there is a dog, border, daycare right there. And, you know, not so much the disruption to them, but putting residential units right next to it, and just the inevitable complaints from residents. I would really like to see this developer make sure that they're aware and they accommodate their residents, recognizing that that business is right there, just so we don't have complaints in the future.
Absolutely. And I think that can be brought up again. What I didn't close with is that if the board does sign the development agreement, the developer intends to move forward with the comprehensive permit process with the zoning board of appeals, which is the forty-B permit. And I believe that that's the proper time as well to provide input and thoughts. And the Board of Selectmen can comment to the zoning board of appeals as well during that process, related to that instance, as well as other instances of the project.
I recognize it's not directly related to this stage of the process, so thank you for allowing me just to get that on record, and I will follow up.
Absolutely.
It's important.
Excellent. Glad you brought that up, because you brought that up a long time ago. And, and I also followed up on that, and, and I, I remember talking to the manager about it, and asking him, I didn't, you know, I forgot about it lately, but can we have a provision here that they acknowledge that it's there?
I guess you can ask for it. We felt like this was in final form. We could have a side letter agreement as well. It's, it's really at the purview of what the board prefers.
I agree with, with the assistant town manager that it is more related to the permitting process, but I...
I think, I would feel more comfortable with a side letter. We don't have to put it in here. But then it's an agreement with us. I would like to have, like it to have a little more teeth, because I think, I think you're right. But after you said that, I've go through there, I had driven by there a few times anyways, but, and I looked at it, said, man, it's like, we, we, we need to get them, we gotta get something in writing that they acknowledge that it's there, I think, wherever, at some place in the process. But they need to acknowledge it's there.
I, I don't disagree. I think acknowledging that it's there, but also just making sure that they're sort of building their, and developing their property to mitigate the disruption to the tenants that will eventually live there. I think we've seen in other situations
Right.
where neighbors are disrupted, and then it becomes an issue for the business that kind of, you know.
Yeah.
You know, in this situation, the business existed before the residents are there.
Right.
But I can certainly understand why a resident would not want to hear a number of barking dogs at all hours. So how does the developer make sure that they place the units in a way that they are not going to have those disturbances?
Can you just look into that?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Maybe this isn't, maybe the agreement's not the place to play it, but I don't, I don't think we should have the unattending consequences of having that business have a problem because of it. Okay, so you just need a vote to, if everybody's okay with this, do you need just a vote, just sign agreement?
That is correct.
Okay.
Before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, just a comment, just to remind the public that this is a forty-B project, and while it would not be our first choice to have housing on that parcel of land, we do recognize the benefits of entering into a LIP agreement and, and signing off on this and moving forward in the process, because it does give us, as you mentioned, Ms. Lass, some control and a seat at the table to have these kinds of back-and-forth discussions, as you were just talking about with, you know, the business is located there. You know, because we aren't at our minimum number of affordable units, it leaves us open to forty-B projects. This one, you know, may be a little bit more desirable or palatable to people because it is an over fifty-five. However, we still have our hands tied in, in a lot of ways around this being located in Shrewsbury. So, you know, definitely going to support this, this, this agreement, knowing that it's in the best interest of the town, because either way, this project's happening. So I'd rather have a seat at the table than not. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement with Gray Star Development East LLC for the construction of a fifty-five-plus residential apartment complex to be located at four oh nine South Street.
Second.
Okay, I'll just second. Any further comment? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, item seventeen is to review an act on a petition to the General Court to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board in accordance with Article forty-six of the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two annual town meeting. We just need a vote to send that to the General Court, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and Town Council prepared this act in preparation for your review and approval.
Right. It's in the language it needs to be to send it to them, right? Okay, so...
So I'll read what's here, right? The certified vote. Do you want me to read that?
Sure.
Okay. Not sure which one. Should I read the special act?
I would say you make a motion to file a petition with the General Court.
Oh, so I don't need to read any of these. Okay. I make a motion to file a motion with the General Court to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board in accordance with Article forty-six of the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Okay. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay, I'll have it goes to Boston. Item eighteen is to review an act on the street closure request of, from Wes Stockhoff and Brian Farrell for intersection of Oak Ridge Way and Noah Drive on, wait a minute, whoops, that's wrong. No, I read it right, but I was thinking something else. It's a street closure request for the intersection of Oak Ridge Way and Noah Drive on Saturday, July ninth, from two p.m. to seven p.m., with a rain date of July twenty-third for neighborhood block party.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Got ahead of myself. I was thinking that was for a sewer connection, and then I realized that couldn't have been right. Item nineteen is to review an act on the street closure request of Grant Wooded on behalf of A and G Construction LLC on July twelfth to July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, from eight a.m. to four p.m., or in the event of inclement weather, on July nineteenth to July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, from eight a.m. to four p.m. for sewer connection.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So voted. Item 20 is to review an act on the street closure request of Michael McCure on behalf of McCure Excreting LLC to perform a water and sewer connection from July 18th to July 22nd, 2022, and July 25th to July 26th from 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Oh, sorry. Okay. This must come from engineering? Okay. Should we do anything with this? Engineering asks that we approve it conditional, conditional on them providing messaging through messaging boards on Route 9 and Route 20 to inform of the detour.
At least a week in advance.
What?
At least a week in advance.
Okay. At least a week in advance.
Right, so just a question, Mr. Chairman. Because when I look at the letter in our packet, it says July 18th through the 26th. And what I'm reading here makes it sound like it's two separate times. So
They might be doing...
Which one is it? Do I say anyone now?
So July 23rd and 24th is a Saturday and a Sunday, so I would assume they're not going to be working that...
Okay, so they're going to open it up for the weekend and then close it back down again?
That's my assumption, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So move approval.
Okay, with the condition that they provide messaging through messaging boards on Route 9 and Route 20 to inform of the detour at least a week ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted. Item 21 is to review an act to authorize the chair to sign the land damage, sign land damage agreements with Mastart relative to the Route 20, Happy Turnpike, Lake Street project. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted. And then we have correspondence. We have item 22, which is an email dated June 20th, 2022, from Judge Woodruff regarding not adding fluoride in public water. It's quite a detailed letter. And I would recommend that we acknowledge the letter, inform the gentleman that we'll be preparing a response and perhaps coordinate it with the Board of Health, because this letter, I understand, also went to the Board of Health. Okay? And finally, item 23 is an email dated June 23rd, 2022, from Robert Holland of the Scholarship Committee forwarding a scholarship, a thank-you note for a scholarship from Kate Hitchcock. So, so noted. Quite a few people got those this year. Okay, anything else to come before the board?
Continue the Terra Brusil public hearing until July 12th.
I got it right. He never showed up. Okay. Yeah, so could I have a motion to continue the hearing of Nubirasi on behalf of Terra Brusilis until July 12th at?
Seven, oh, 7:10 again?
7:10? Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. Now, could we have a motion, George? Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.